All right, good. Well, hopefully this will work. Again, we are being recorded and see, call the meeting to order. And are there, is there any public comment not on the agenda this evening? If so, please raise your hand. Okay, seeing none, Chairman's report. I did receive information that we are in a drought situation here in town. So do we need to put that on the agenda and discuss that can't be closed?
It can't be?
No. Yeah, it's an open meeting. You have to have those doors open.
I said you have to have those doors open.
At least one of them, please. Thank you.
So right now, the state is at a stage two of a drought. It's pretty mild. So it's just really a heads up at this point. Obviously, people should always be conserving water consumption. But but the spring has been low for precipitation. Grably Pond is actually full, so we're doing better than most. But nonetheless, precipitation is down and it's something that we need to keep our eyes on.
I think so. There were the recommendations of perhaps having people just water lawns at certain times hand water only or water whatever. We can discuss that, not tonight, but would that be something at the next meeting we should talk about?
Absolutely, absolutely.
Haven't done, okay. So if we can add that to the next agenda to discuss drought conditions, get an update as well as any mitigation we want to do with that. Okay, first on the appointment is the annual reappointments. Did everybody have a chance to go over those?
I did.
Good, all right. So if there are. Greg, do you think we're okay to go ahead and just do a general approval of all of those? Or do we need to do those?
Well, I think I would, I think I would just read off the names in the different committees. You know, take it, you know, one year appointments, two year appointments.
Which is how they were presented. Unfortunately. Sorry, everybody, please bear with me as I get my various alliances to cooperate. And you have the list up on your computer. Thank you very much. Okay, so for the one year term, we have the Animal Inspector Hayes Demoule, Downtown Improvement Project Steve Carhart, Fedkagar Morse, Carly Cook, Linda Crosby, and Marlene Dolan. Emergency Management Jason Cleary, Assistant Director Shellfish, Constable James Elder, Tree Warden Thomas Henderson.
Move to approve those appointments, reappointments.
Second.
Okay, I have approved by Ann Harrison, second Kathy Bellata, Brian Solacy. Yes, Kathy Bellata and Becky Jake says yes as well. Does John get a vote? John!
John gets a vote and John says yes.
I was set out of mind.
Well.
I haven't been around for so long.
Well, it's nice to see your face back in the state.
Well, I feel a little lonely out here, but I'll be back the next time for sure in person.
Glad to hear it. No more Alaska trips.
Nope, none with that and COVID.
Okay, two year terms ending in 2024 Affordable Housing Trust Sarah Melish. Do I have a motion?
Yes, I would certainly support Sarah Melish's reappointment.
I'll second that.
Thank you, all in favor or Brian Solacy?
Yes.
Ann Harrison, Kathy Bellata, John Round?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes as well. So for the three year terms ending 2025, we have the ADA Committee with Joan Snow and Beth Heisey, Assessors Rob Beatty, Bike Ped Committee Susan Sentner, Board of Appeals Catherine Howe, Board of Health Dr. Tanya Cole Pitts and Peter Colaruso, Building Inspector Paul Orlando, Cable Access Corp Representative and Cape Van Regional Planning Paul Germain, Tribeca Woods Land Management Committee Ralph Smith, Conservation Commission Steve Gang, Council on Aging Jane Matrono, Cultural Council Diane Kilgore, Finance Committee Sarah Melish, Manchester Coastal Stream Partition Patricia Mitchell and Deb Fraz, Open Space and Rec Steve Gang, Seaside One Committee Thomas Durkin, Wiring Inspector Joseph Novello. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve the three year appointments.
Second?
Second.
Thank you, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Brian Solacy. John Round?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Yes.
Ann Harrison says yes, Brian Solacy, yes, and Becky Jake says yes. Thank you very much.
We should all congratulate all of them, not congratulate, maybe sympathize with all of them. We're taking on so much of the burden of attention.
We thank them all immensely. So thank you. And next on the agenda is the Common Victualler's License for Boo Bird 26 Central Street. And we have Mary Ann Wood with us. Does the board have anybody, any questions? Anybody on the board?
Is this a timed agenda? I don't do any, we don't need to.
Yes, we do. Thank you very much. Kathy has just pointed out that that is on the license, on the agenda for 6:45 and we cannot jump ahead in case somebody wants to comment on that. So we can, we can jump to the consent agenda and approval of the minutes. I have not, I missed seeing the June 6 meeting minutes. Has everybody else read them?
I have.
Brian, John Round, have you read the June 6 minute meeting?
I, as you know, I did not attend, but I did read them. Yes, I did.
Right, but did you see anything that needed noting, spelling?
No, no, I was fine with them as they, as written.
Okay. Does, then we will pull those out since John and I will not be voting on those. May I have a motion to approve the minutes for May 24th of 2022?
So moved.
I'll second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, second Kathy Bellata, John Round?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes. May I have a motion to approve the minutes of June 6, 2022?
So moved.
Second? Okay, moved by Kathy Bellata, second by Brian Solacy. Brian?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
And I was not there, so wait, no, I was there, but I didn't read them. Good golly, so I am not going to vote on those. I'm abstaining, thank you. And John was not there as well.
I am abstaining.
Thank you. Any questions regarding declaring the ambulance to as surplus property? Will we have a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, moved by Ann Harrison, seconded by Kathy Bellata. Brian?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Kathy?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
And Becky Jake says yes as well. All right, so that is consent agenda. We still have four minutes. Greg, do you want to do anything from the Administrator's Report?
I'm sure I can move with that. So just quickly, first up is.
I'm sorry, before you start, Ann, did you want to say something?
I wondered if we could just talk about when we could get together in the summer.
Oh, for the.
Okay, yeah, but I thought if we took that, that's a short one.
Yep.
I'm likely to cause lots of controversy.
That's a good idea.
Good idea.
All right, so, and that would be for a couple of hours typically during a Saturday. You can look at people's schedules. Do we want to start, do you want to look in August?
So I won't be meeting in person prior to my daughter's wedding, which is July 23rd on a Saturday, so I'm free any other Saturday in the summer.
Okay, so after.
I could certainly join by Zoom, you know, if.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's July, July 23rd, that's when the wedding is held.
Okay, so. Brian, do you have any limitations?
If I leave town, it will be that weekend, the 23rd, so. My grandson's birthday is the 22nd. I usually head to Utah for that weekend except. I think I'll be wrong, but if we're not going to 23rd, let's just block off the 23rd.
Okay. Ann?
Sadly, my summer has fallen apart, so I'm free.
Oh, no, I'm sorry to hear that.
My husband has ganaric surgery all summer, so. So we're not going to Nova Scotia.
Oh, no, I'm sorry.
Well, it's good news for everybody. No, it isn't good news for everybody.
It's time for the sale to get repaired, huh? John Round, how about you?
Yeah, I'm just checking. Everything's good except I think the 16th of July for me.
All right, so why don't we go to?
Let's see, 27th of July, no, August?
30th.
30th of July?
30th of July. Six.
When is the art festival?
I think the next weekend. August 6th is the art festival.
Okay, I would not want to conflict with that.
No, and I think that it would benefit us to do it, to get together sooner than later. So what about, and Greg, would that work for you?
The 30th is fine.
Okay, why don't we put down Saturday, July 30th? We'll meet here. It's nine o'clock, too early?
Yes.
10 o'clock?
That's fine.
It's better.
It's, it'll take more than, more than a couple of hours, so.
Nine o'clock would be fine.
Okay. Again? On a good thing? Yes, okay, so we'll alternatively, so with this, if you all can think about items that you feel are of importance that the board should be addressing or concerned, Greg, what else?
So we typically, you know, sort of do a look back, what went well, what didn't go so well. We take a look at process. What, what find, what are suggestions people have, sort of fine tuning the meetings, fine tuning information flow, so melds into discussion maybe later this evening. And then also looking at priorities in terms of projects. Primarily project, topics that are, that you want to focus on.
And if you want to send anything forward to Greg, just don't, as everybody knows, but I like to reiterate, don't send it in a group email, just send it straight to Greg, please. All right, that's in there. Okay, we're one minute late for you here, Ann. Well, there's nothing to worry about here. Let me see if anybody on Zoom. Does anybody attending the meeting have anything they would like to say regarding Boo Bird? Okay, seeing none, any items from the board? Motion to approve the Victualler's License for Boo Bird at 26 Central Street.
Thank you, honey.
I'm looking for a moment.
Sorry.
All right.
All right, wonderful, moved by Brian Solacy, seconded by Ann Harrison. John Round?
Yes.
Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Ann?
Yes.
Brian?
Yes.
And Becky says yes. Thank you very much. Good luck. Can't wait to have you open.
Will I get to sign it?
Before we sign it, before you go tonight, John can come in tomorrow and it'll be all ready to go.
Okay. Is that something that Diane needs to receive after we sign it? Or can we sign it right now?
I think you can sign it now.
You can sign it now.
I just got to take. No, you can do it right now. The top one.
Just the top one?
Yeah, the other ones were ones that never had, never had licenses made up. Those were all approved. Yeah, they've been approved. Yes, they never signed licenses. The only one to.
They do, they'll be there and we'll just wait until Debbie gets back. So. Next on the agenda, we have the block party request for the 4th of July Norwood Avenue between Lakin Street and Vine Street.
And we have five minutes before we.
You're too fast.
Yep. And we need to wait anyway. Debbie's not here. We have five minutes. Anything else you want to?
All right, go back to my report. So the, just giving a quick update on grants that are underway or in the works. We're still waiting to hear from Eva, the brick grant, this is a large grant. We continue to be encouraged. We keep checking up various boxes on their end. So it keeps progressing, so that's the good news. It's just taking a lot longer than we thought it was going to. But we're told that they're, that they're getting close to the end of their checkoff list. So we do hope to hear fairly soon. So keep, keep our eyes and ears open for that. A few grants have been written to try to advance the work of the local rapid recovery program. So we, as you may recall, we participated with the state. They gave us funds to do a joint study with Essex, both of our downtowns and ways to improve some economic mentality. We've submitted a few grants that have not been successful. We've got a couple more in the hopper.
Do we know why we've not been successful with them?
They're all very competitive. And it's, you know, it gets pretty subjective when you have several different grants being submitted. The dollars, they try to do a geographic distribution. They try to assess vitality and the other resources a community might have. So they tend to focus on communities that are struggling perhaps more. So, so it can be, can be difficult to be competitive sometimes, but you're still trying. And we can have Sue, Sue and Sue give us a little more insight this next time around.
Are you, which ones specifically they're looking into?
So they're, they're looking, the ones that were submitted recently would go towards helping create special events off season. So pay for some staff time to do that, to bring in someone to help do some brainstorming and coordinating with the business community and then actually running the special event or two. So that was a joint application with Essex, but each would get their own special event.
And the place, are we looking into the place identity, that aspect?
Yes, the place making one, yes. And again, the first go round was not, was not awarded. Again, I think a second submittal or another, another grant was, is in the works.
Now, are these being submitted jointly with Essex or is Essex submitting their own?
Some have been joint and some have been individually.
Because it does make sense that some of them actually be joint, right? Okay.
And we're sort of taking our cues from the funding sources, some of them preferred joint applications and others didn't. So depends on the founder.
Okay.
And then we did recently submit a proposal to Coastal Zone Management, CZM, for focus on our village core area and start to identify some options for protecting it from large storms and sea level rise. And so we'll hear about that late summer. And if we were successful, that would get underway in September. So stay tuned on that.
All right, that brings us up one minute and I apologize to Brian and Kathy and anybody on Zoom who isn't aware what we were talking about regarding the grants. These were the monies that the government gave, Fed gave states and states are meeting out for recovered, it's called rapid recovery, to towns and cities to try to help.
Businesses recover.
After recovery.
And quite, quite an interesting presentation we received on that. And if you're interested, you can get that from Sue Brown.
Yeah, and it is online as well.
It's really good, okay. 6:55 brings us to the block party request. Yeah, Christine Matrono is with us.
Here, thank you.
Barbara, sorry about that. I forgot the other part. Can, just for everybody who's on the Zoom meeting, Christine, can you please give a little background information as to specifically what it is you are requesting?
Sure, so a group of us in the neighborhood of Norwood Ave. Were interested in getting together for the 4th of July. And in the past, from growing up here, there used to be a couple of streets in town that would do major block parties where they would shut the road down and everybody would have barbecues and that kind of thing in the, in the streets. So we were interested in doing that. Originally, we had wanted the whole Norwood Ave blocked off, but that just seemed to be too big of an ask. So we're now requesting the upper end towards Lincoln Street in between Vine and Lincoln to be closed on the 4th of July, starting around 5:00 PM after the parade traffic is gone and things have cleared out a little bit, just to have the neighbors gather, be able to go out in the street and, and have a block party.
And you, it noted that you were asking 5:00 to 11:00 P, correct?
Or even 5:00 to 10:00, whichever was acceptable. It's all families, so it's not like it's going to be an all night party, so.
Okay, and I believe you have been in contact with Chief Fitzgerald.
I did, yep, and he suggested that I had to go before the board as well. He's been helping me with that.
And I, I believe he also made the suggestion of Brook Street, the Coach Field Parking Lot.
And. Yeah, we had, we had decided that we wanted to keep it a little more isolated, you know, in the neighborhood instead of having it be that many streets around. And it was just, would get to be too much carrying all the food down there and that kind of thing, so.
But this is going to be involving the whole of Norwood Avenue has been invited?
Well, no, I, I had given out flyers just suggesting up from the top of Lincoln down to Brook Street. So I had, the more people towards Lincoln were the ones that responded, that they were interested. So that's why we kind of kept it up that way.
Okay. I would like to have Chief Fitzgerald comment on this before the board. Is everybody all right with that? Okay, Chief?
Yes, good evening, Becky. Thanks. Yeah, I mean, I think I would prefer it if it could go into the Brook Street Playground Parking Lot. That place is, that spot's already going to be blocked off for the parade anyway. But, you know, if it's only that short section, that's more manageable than the entire road, which was first asked. So if it's got proper barricades and I'd ask at least if we could try and hire a, one police officer, you know, for that evening or for that timeframe, if, if we can fill it. However, it may be difficult, given the time of year, since we already have our normal details scheduled in the book for that night.
Okay, are you requiring, sorry, are you requiring that, Chief Fitzgerald? Yep.
I'm sorry, but, but if you want to have a dialogue, just it's supposed to go through whomever's heading the meeting.
Okay.
And that's, that's, no, I know, nobody knows unless they get told. And I understand that. It's just one of those, I guess, kind of keeps things more organized. So as opposed to a back and forth dialogue between you and the chief. So with that said, please feel free to ask your question of Chief Fitzgerald.
Okay, thank you. No, Chief, what I want to say was, is that required by the town to have a detailed officer? Or is that just what you prefer?
Well, normally when we close roads, the town or the contractor, if they're doing roadwork, is required to have a police detail.
Okay.
That's just been our policy, you know, for the longest, long time since I've been here.
Okay.
Okay, excuse me, yes, Ann?
Ordinarily, when you have a road closing, you have an officer at each end for when it's construction. Would you want two officers, two details?
No, I think in that vicinity, we could probably get away with one. And I, I had thought about two, but given the, that weekend and, you know, that we had the fireworks and the parade, everyone's scheduled to work and details that we've already had called in, it may be difficult to fill. So if we could at least have one there, that would be, I feel more confident with at least one officer there. So no, we would just go with one.
Okay, I'm, what I'm going to do now is I, I'm going to open up questions to the board. And I do have one question for, first of all, for Christine. You said you want to block the barricade two ends or block two ends of the street. How will you do that to ensure that cars won't be trying to get around whatever barricade you're using? What will you all physically use? cars won't be trying to get around whatever barricade you're using? What will you all physically use?
Well, I think I would ask what they suggest we use and then we would go ahead and obtain that particular, whether it's sawhorses or whatever they would feel comfortable, they meaning the police officers, whatever they would feel comfortable with. I honestly hadn't really thought of it yet. But I'm open to any suggestions.
One of the concerns I would have regarding having sawhorses or whatever is that if you're having a party that's going till ten o'clock at night, it will be dark. And that, that might make it difficult without a police detail at, at, at the Lincoln Street end to manage traffic around that way. But that's just one of my thoughts. Open it up to the board.
Yeah, I have a question, Becky.
Oh, go ahead, John.
Yeah, so Chief, can we assume that Vine Street's open the whole way?
Vine Street will be open the whole way, according to what Christine's asked for, yes.
Right, so that's an easy, easy detour. Okay.
Brian? Anne?
I just want to make sure that she has checked with all of the neighbors and nobody's going to decide that they desperately need to go out and go to a restaurant in the middle of the party.
Christine, can you answer?
Sure. So it's just in the very preliminary planning stages of this. We weren't even sure if we'd be allowed to do it. What I did was I handed out a flyer, which I gave to Debbie today, just a copy of that. So, you know, asking people if they were interested and if people could give me back their, their feedback. All the people that have contacted me were very excited about it and I haven't had any negative feedback. And because it would only be closed with just a few houses that are on that end, everybody has said they were fine with it. But I will go ahead and ask them again before it actually occurs.
I have a question. So what about the folks on that one dead end street? Philly Circle?
Yes. Yep. So we, I had given them flyers as well.
So that was, I guess that's my question. They, they would also be completely blocked in and would want to make sure that they had no concerns about.
Were all the neighbors notified, Christine?
Yes, I put a flyer in everybody's mailbox.
And did everybody know there was, did, did they know this would be on the agenda this evening?
I said that I was going before the board on the twenty-first.
I love the idea. I, I think it's a wonderful idea. I'm just concerned that what Anne brought up regarding neighbors who might want to get out as well as again, the lighting of whatever you're using to block the roads. Todd, I'm sorry, you said you.
I just, I just want to reiterate that, that you know, how it's set up, we still have to leave access for a fire truck or an ambulance to get down there as well. So I mean, we can't totally block the road. We can, we can block it with, you know, for, for vehicle traffic, for regular vehicle traffic. If it's going to have to be able to be opened immediately in case that fire truck has to get through.
Sure.
Again, I, I love the idea, but I, it's, it's, we live in such a, in a world now that relies so heavily upon our cars and, and if some neighbors want out, I, I feel that, that we need to hear from them before actually, that, that's my feeling. I, I, before making a decision for the whole, that whole stretch of road.
It's not a big stretch.
No, it's not.
And, and if there's going to be room for ambulance and fire, if, if the barricades have to be such that they can be moved for, then I would think that, that something could be done to let a neighbor who wanted to get out, get out. I think expecting Christine to show up with signed affidavits from everybody on both streets is a little broad.
Not what I'm looking for, but, but I get your point. I, I get your point. I, I, I'm happy with her answer.
And I would, I would just to echo with Anne saying, they're all neighbors. Someone wants to get out, they're going to let them out. Okay. I think it's an excellent, it would be two years if, you know, blocked, locked down. There's an opportunity to, a little bit dormancy. And I'm sure they can navigate through this whole thing as neighbors.
Yeah, I, I like the idea. Just that, I'm going to throw it out as a possible suggestion. Would you consider an even shorter party, not shorter party, shorter length of the street, just block from Philly Circle to Lincoln Street. I don't, at least those people could get out if, if needed. Just, just something to consider, but I'm okay with it, really.
Yeah, I mean, for the Lincoln Street, you know, Philly Circle down, there's only one house on the other side of it. So.
John Round?
Yeah, you might, you might suggest, folks will probably take, take this initiative anyway. Park one car a little further down Norwood for five hours.
Right.
You know, so that you're not disturbing. I don't know if this is going to be a really crowded thing or not. Obviously, you can get out if you had to, because if there's sawhorses or whatever, and you need to have the provision for emergency vehicles to come in. But if I were living there, I'd just park down the street fifty yards, one car, just in case. And that's it.
Okay, my last question then, thank you, John, is music. Will you all be playing music outside? And I'm just asking because typically, you know, after a certain time, music and out in public is not always.
Right. I think, I mean, we had talked about my son and one of the neighbors, Greg, I can't think of his last name, next to my parents there. They were talking about playing their guitars and just things like that. And again, it's mostly families, so I don't think it will be loud. And certainly, everybody will probably be gone by nine, you know, and so I don't, I don't see it being a huge deal. But you know, we'd have no problem keeping it low.
Okay, wonderful. There are two hands raised and may I ask that the people who are raising their hands only do so if you want to speak specifically to this topic. Okay, Sandy, please, your name and address.
Great, thanks. Sandy Rogers, eighty-two Old Essex Road. I want to preface this to say, I love the idea of neighborhoods doing block parties again. I think it's fabulous. And I think our town embracing all of that is, is great. I have two questions. One is, I'm not sure what our fireworks schedule is and if there is a rain date. And if this date is one of the two, then I think it might cause a lot of issues because of the amount of traffic and the amount of car traffic as well as foot traffic that might happen then. So if it is a rain date one, if it's not the, the regular fireworks one, that could cause a lot of issues.
Okay, thank you. Good point.
Second is, this is just foot traffic in general, because it is the Fourth of July. We have a lot of people in town and a lot of people from out of town. And will people that might just need to cut through that area, I know I walk through that area all the time, will we be allowed to? And being in the evening, I'd want to make sure that the people that live there feel like safe from outsiders that might be wanting to go through the neighborhood. It's going to be hard to stop that. So one is just the foot traffic, but two is the real concern about if it is like the rain date, then they might need to plan that that has to be open.
Okay, wonderful. That's great, Sandy. Thank you very much. Two very good points. So we'll follow up on those. I'm going to go to Andrew now, but thank you, Sandy.
Hi, yes, Andrew Lane, Fifty Beach Street. I understand everybody's got to do their due diligence, of course. That's part of the thing. But I, in my opinion, is I think this should be definitely be granted. It's a small block party, Fourth of July. You know, let's, let's, let's give it to them. Thank you.
Wonderful. I think the rain date is the fifth. Okay. Excellent. And as far as the foot traffic goes, if we're going to have a detailed officer there. Todd, can you speak to the foot traffic aspect of this?
Well, I mean, it's technically a public way. We're not going to keep people out, but we'll definitely keep the peace and, and try and control the crowd. I don't expect this to be, you know, people coming in from all areas of, of town, so.
They typically leave after the parade and everything.
With the Old Essex Road Party years ago, we really had any issues.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, any more comments from the board? John Round, anything?
I'm good, Becky.
Okay, would.
I, I'm moved that we approved the block, the closing of Lincoln Street, not Norwood Avenue between Lincoln and Vine with Vine being left open. Subject to the conditions that the police chief recommends.
Okay.
And from the hours of five until ten and no amplified music.
A second.
Okay. Any further discussion?
Just one question.
Yes, Brian.
Given, as Chief Fitzgerald said, if you can't come up with a detail, if he doesn't have personnel to, to service that, we still want to go forward with it.
Okay, John Round?
Looking for a vote?
I, yes. Yes or no?
Yes.
Brian Solacey?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Kathy Blodde?
Yes.
Becky Jake says yes. So it was moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by Kathy Blodde unanimous approval. Have fun, Christine.
Thank you so much to all of you. Take care.
Great idea. Have fun.
Thank you.
Okay, dispatch update. It is now seven thirteen, so we are a few minutes behind on this. I am going to start off with some information that I have gotten together. We did have a tour of the facility, the North Shore facility on the sixteenth. And Kathy, Anne and I were able to make it. John was not due to illness and Brian was working. That said, I think that we do need to come to a decision and make a vote. This can has been kicked and needs to be decided upon. I do want to state several items for whomever may be listening in on Zoom tonight or attending, that when we as members of boards and committees for the Town of Manchester get sworn in, the swearing in is done, that what we are doing is, and I will quote, solemnly swear that you will faithfully and impartially perform your duties as whatever position for the Town of Manchester by the Sea, to the best of your knowledge and ability, according to the bylaws of the town, the laws of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts and the Constitution of the United States. The reason I'm reading that right now is that we are here as a board to do what is in the best interest of the town. And sometimes with that comes the responsibility to make decisions that are not always favorable or what some people perceive to be the right thing. Lorraine Iavani sent us, among other emails, one where she pointed out some really important aspects of our responsibilities. And some of those are to uphold, and this is quoting from the state, uphold fiduciary principles and act in the best interests of the public organization. That is what we must do. So we have a responsibility to the town to do what is in the best interest of the town as a whole. That said, part of the Massachusetts Municipal Select Persons Handbook says that we have to make decisions based on facts, data and logic, even when those decisions are unpopular. So there are some who feel that the vote that was taken, the non-binding vote, should be the single metric by which we vote. And I don't agree with that. Our own finance committee voted unanimously to support going to regional. There are a lot of financial impacts that would become exponentially higher if we choose to stay in town. That said, I love being in a small town where we have our local police department that we can go in and see someone behind the desk. To that end, the dispatchers are not local people, so they don't necessarily know all of us, nor do we know all of them. But they do have the benefit of being in the town and meeting the people that come in. So with that said, I would like to have some discussion from the board. I will take public comment, but I would ask that anybody who wishes to comment, please keep it brief. And if it's something that has been repeated and yet you feel you need to restate it, please feel free to do so, but, but please with brevity. So I would like to ask each member of the board to say what they, if they have any other further concerns that have not been addressed or discussed at this point. And I would like to start with Anne Harrison.
It seems as if this has all been very much discussed. My.
In public meetings.
In public meetings, in private meetings, not in private meetings with us, but thank you, private groups. My concern is the small chance of a major, two major problems occurring at the same time. And I don't see.
Clarify a little bit more what you mean by that.
What I mean by that is that we have a major traffic accident somewhere. And at the same time, somebody is having a heart attack. And the dispatcher, in the case of a medical emergency, is supposed to stay on the phone with the medical emergency. And how they do that and simultaneously dispatch medical and, and police, and if necessary, bring in outside agencies. I, we do not have enough depth in our dispatch. I understand that there has never been a case noted where this has happened, but it is a situation where it, it's life threatening. And, and I've talked with Greg and with lots of people. We have an unusual situation with the dispatch where they are, the one person generally doesn't have very much to do. And two people would be significantly worse than that. So there's not enough to do. And then occasionally, in a crisis, there's too much to do. And, and that, that's the situation that, that I, I worry about. And I, as I say, I've talked to Greg, I've talked with anybody who would listen to me, trying to come up with a solution. But the solution of having another town back us up. We heard very clearly from the North Shore nine one one that there is a lot of work that goes into being ready to be backup.
Yep.
And I don't, maybe we could find someone who's willing to do that work, but I don't, I don't think it's likely and I'm not sure that it's, it's a long-term solution. So that's my concern.
And to that, I will add that right now, when, when I first moved to town, which granted, I'm still new, it's only been about thirty years. But we did still have two separate dispatches. And when dispatch was taken out of the fire department and we only had it at the police department, currently it, it does not function optimally. And there's no independent oversight or management of, of our dispatch. And that's also very concerning for a variety of reasons. John Round?
Thank, thank you, Becky. So obviously, we've, the town has been pushing this issue around for, I don't know, over ten years anyway. And, you know, in the past year, I could not get a handle on which way most people wanted to go with this, the voters. And was certainly in favor of putting on a non-binding referendum to find out what the story was. With about one-third of the people voting, and I don't know if that's a lot or average for, for our town, I was, I was still surprised at the result, the fifty-seven, forty-three split. I don't look at this decision as a bet the farm, make or break type of situation. If we had to move our water treatments, our, not our water, but our sewer system or something, yes, that's kind of make or break. This is not. This is certainly, you know, if, if it winds up being in-house, it's an inconvenience and it makes life more difficult for selectmen for the finance committee, but it's, it's not a make or break situation. I got the message that safety was the number one concern of most folks about moving through a regional situation. People seem to equate safety with the dispatchers knowing the town. I agree that safety is a number one consideration, but I don't think that it's a differentiator. We've seen lots and lots of data that have come out of the regional operation. And it seems to me it's every bit as safe as the operation that we have here, maybe a bit more so because they do have more dispatchers that operate over there. I believe that the police officer or the firefighter who was active that night is the most important person in terms of knowing our town and knowing how to get around. responsiveness was also something that a lot of people had concerns about. That kind of fits with safety a little bit. But I, I don't see that responsiveness is a difference. As we all know, telephone calls go at the speed of light, regardless of where they're coming from. And it'd be the same number of contacts that you're making, going from a dispatcher to, to the safety officer who was on, who was, who was working at that time when there was a problem. The third factor is money, and that is a differentiator. And we've all seen the numbers. It's certainly several hundred thousand dollars and it represents right now a hundred and fifty dollars, two hundred dollars for the typical taxpayer. And keeping it in-house, that number will go up a little bit, I think, or maybe it'll go up to two fifty or three hundred. I don't know. But I expect that number will go up if, if it is, if it is kept in-house. A third factor, I think, that kind of fit in with a lot of the voters, if it ain't broke, don't fix it. And most people are satisfied with what's, what's, with the, with the way the dispatchers have handled the job to date. And I think we can all agree that they've done a very, very admirable job. So overall, it's, there's no question, it's a, it's a, it's a difficult decision, but that's kind of the rationale that I've been going through to date.
Thank you, John. I, I did want to respond to a couple of your comments, one regarding the know the town. It, they all will use GPS maps and GIS, sorry about that, the GIS maps. And I, I don't find that the, the local dispatch comparison to regional dispatch as a, a valid one from the standpoint that the dispatchers don't live in our town either. So I, it's the, the, the regional dispatchers do ride-alongs. They, they have, when we took the tour the other day, what they do when doing the onboarding to become familiar with the town is extensive. And that I would not have a concern with based on the tour and information that we were given. If anything, it's, it's a remarkable operation that has built in a lot of backups. And to Anne's point about the worry about if in fact we do have a critical situation, we can't handle that right now. And to do that, John, in terms of the finances, it would really greatly go up. The percentage of tax rates that each person would incur is significant if we stay in town. So I, I think that, that and, and the numbers are all online, but, but people need to understand just how this will impact each of them. I'm not saying we shouldn't do that. If in fact we stay in town with, with dispatch, then we have to bite off a massive chunk of money and find it somewhere. We can't take it out of excess reserves. It's going to have to come out of tax, by taxation. And I have a breakdown of, of, of the, the, how it would impact on the tax rate versus annual savings. But I, we've already had all that information and it's accessible. And regarding if it ain't broke, I think it is broken. We don't have fair, our, our police and fire departments don't have equal representation over dispatch at this point. And it's not an independent organization, which it really needs, my understanding, that is that it, it needs to be. So, John, do you want to say anything else before I move on?
No, I'm, I'm, I'm good. I, I, I agree. When I said that they broke, don't fix it, I think to the consumer, that's what they see. We see much more. And I agree, organizationally, it's, you know, the duck in the water proverbially looks, looks pretty good on the surface, but paddling as fast as we can underneath. And there are challenges to the way it's organized right now and trying to, trying to keep it together. But the delivery of the service has been A1, the dispatchers and what they do and how, how the consumer has, has seen the picture.
Great. Thank you, John. Sarah, I'll come back to you. I just want to get the other two members on the board first. Brian?
Oh, thank you. A couple of items, Becky. You say that the dispatchers don't live in town. That's my knowledge. I can only, three police offices live in town as well. Okay, so we've got that, okay.
But we're talking about dispatch.
I know, but we're talking about who knows the town, okay? And I think it's.
Let the police drive around, right?
Okay, and what you were talking about is that there'd be a ride-along during, if they went regional. I, I can't imagine that we couldn't incorporate that in training for our dispatches. We've learned an awful lot in the last year or so, okay? And rather than, and to John's point, if it's not broken, don't fix it, but we can certainly improve it. Okay, I think the voters, it was well laid out what the costs were going to be, okay? And the voters, a majority of the voters, I don't know the one majority, but a majority of the voters voted to keep it in-house.
Of the voters who voted.
Well, and to, we passed budgets with less people. Okay, so, so having said that, decisions are made by those who show up.
Yes.
Okay. And as far as majority goes, hey, I'm sitting here. I won by two votes. Okay, so we know what, okay, the majority. I think that although we might not have a legal obligation to the voters in that regard, as far as, okay, I certainly think we have a moral and ethical obligation to the voters. Okay, and they spoke. We should listen. All right. And finally, we also have, we set a metric for the police chief as far as community policing. Okay, well, what better way of community policing is also incorporating his needs or desires for a local dispatch? Okay, and I think that having an empty lobby eight hours out of the day, okay, doesn't play to that, that metric. I think that if we're going to be consistent, we should be consistent throughout. And I'm just concerned about the optics of not listening to the voters. That's all.
Okay, did you, you never had a chance to get over to the North Shore nine one one, did you?
No.
Okay.
I don't have to, again, I just want to make sure. No, no, I just, you know, I don't have to know how electricity is made. I just want to know when I flip the switch like it was on.
Which is what most people think. So now, I, I'd like to address when you say it's more moral and ethical. Now, and that's not what we are charged to do with here.
Okay.
Okay, yes, we want to be moral and ethical, but what we as a board are charged with is doing what's in the best interest of the town. And that is.
I, I get that. Okay, but I think the numbers were laid out and the vote is still.
Again, what I say is, yes, you do want to listen to people. Of course I do. I, I don't want to say no, but, but and this is why I did not vote for that non-binding referendum. I felt it was not going to be a proper way of, of finding, getting some information. And unfortunately, social media was a platform used for incorrect information, sometimes deliberately, sometimes not, where, you know, it's the, it's that, that game of telephone, whatever, whisper in someone's ear. So again, moral and ethical, yes, I hope there's nothing any of us does on this board that's not.
Again, that's the optics.
But our job is to do what is in the best interest of the town.
Okay.
Not a subsection of that town. Then regarding listening to what the police chief says, I agree. And I also want to listen to what the fire chief says. So it's, it's not an either or. We need to listen to both, come up with what the right answer is.
Again.
Then as far as the empty lobby goes, it's, it's not going to be empty lobby all day. That's, that's not what we're talking about. So I just, I just wanted to address that. I do not in any way disregard what the voters have said. But they simply do not have all the information. We have supplied as much as we can, but there's a lot to weed through that perhaps not everybody gets in its proper context. And, and so I'm just, just point counterpoint. Kathy Blodde?
Yeah, so two weeks ago, I had a lot to say on this issue. And, you know, based on, on the feedback from the voters, I was searching for options to, you know, find a middle ground, right? So I asked a lot of questions. Could we do this? Could we do that? Because when, you know, the voters had a say, and it is important to listen to them. Unfortunately, some of those things I proposed, they're not feasible and for very good reason. And I'd had two requests for information at that last board meeting. One was, I wanted to see the contracts. I just don't approve anything without seeing it with my own eyes. And I also felt that there had been no discussion on the transition plan. And when you transition, when you consider transitioning to another organizational model, how you do that is every bit as important as the end destination. So I was not interested in, in, in saying, yeah, let's go regional, when I had no idea how we were going to get there. So that tour that we took was eye-opening for me. I had previously stated that I believe the organization was well-run and that the savings were real. And I expressed those opinions based on the reports, the annual reports. And once again, you talk about information, Becky, any information prior to July of twenty nineteen, in my view, is not relevant at all. Because, because July of twenty nineteen is when the state nine one one took over the operation. They cleaned it up. And I felt by reading those reports, it's a well-run operation. And the sins of the past were under different leadership and under different management. So I really, you know, information and data is like milk. It doesn't last forever, okay? It goes stale. It goes bad. And so it's very important when looking at information, you, you, you know, we all look at the timing of it. So that said, you know, we went on the tour and I got my two questions answered. We reviewed the intermunicipal agreement that all of the other towns have signed. We asked questions about what would happen at the end of the agreement. And I was satisfied with the answer. Basically, that it's, it's not a traditional corporate contract like I'm used to. It is an agreement amongst the towns. And so for the towns that sign on, if you like the way things are going and you're fine with that center being paid for based on, I think, a surcharge on the cell phone bill or telephone bill, then that's how it would continue to, to do it at the end of the agreement. You just kind of, you can extend it or you, the towns can choose to modify the agreement at the, at the end of its natural life to do something different. But we don't, I, I did not leave that discussion feeling like we would lose control. You know, we have, we have a big say. The other thing we looked at was the transition plan. And, you know, the devil's in the details, but I wasn't looking for all four hundred line items that they apparently have in a draft transition plan. So I was pleased to hear that. But they showed us the high level. And it was enough to convince me that they know what they're doing. And it was based on, they understand what to do before you transition. They understand how to plan the transition. And they also understand what tasks and activities can wait until after go-live. So I was looking for specific things. And not only did they understand the questions I was asking, but they understood why I was asking them. And the other aspect of the tour that I would say impressed me was I, I left the tour understanding that they are more mature operationally than I thought. So I thought they were a well-run operation, but it's very clear they have built a culture of proactive, continuous improvement is how I would describe it. That's very mature. And I was not expecting that when I walked in there. In fact, some of the questions that this town has asked them caused them to rethink how they're going to do the feasibility study. And they said they might add some additional information onto the feasibility study, not because we said they should, but just because we were asking certain questions and it made them think. So that was really good. The, the last piece that was interesting to hear is because they haven't, that particular center has not done a transition in quite a while. You know, we asked questions around, well, okay, you have this great transition plan. Where are you getting your lessons learned from? You haven't done this in a while. And the state nine one one leader mentioned that there's another town going into their south, I think it was southeast. And, uh, the, uh, state nine one one leader, uh, mentioned that there's another town going into their south, I think it was southeast regional center. Um, their go-live, I believe, is scheduled for early next year, January, something like that. And so they, there's another town going first, going into one of these regional centers. They could leverage the lessons learned from that, so we wouldn't be, um, uh.
Guinea pigs.
Yeah, guinea pigs. Right, and, and so I was, I, uh, I really, what made me feel good about the tour and, and the people there was just the level of detail and the backup on top of backup. And they're, um, I, I just left there with a great deal of confidence that they would serve the citizens of Manchester well. And they are incredibly incentivized to help us get there smoothly. And that was also based on the individuals in the room, which I don't think this town has met with before. Greg, I apologize, I didn't write down everybody's name. Um, but it wasn't just the leaders of that facility who were there, it was the state nine one one.
They were the two, two top dogs.
You don't get any higher than that, in that, in that area. So that is another sign to me that they are highly incentivized to make sure that a transition would be very smooth. Um, so, uh, I got my questions answered and, um, a couple of pleasant surprises.
Thank you. Um, so when you say you were talking about options for middle ground, um, why do you feel those were not options anymore?
So when we discussed that, um, at the, um, meeting with the regional team, they did talk about the fact that in order for their, uh, for example, the backup, I said, can we use you as a backup? They said they would actually have to convert a lot of our data into their systems in order to be a valuable backup. That made sense to me, and if you're going to do that, you might as well just move into the regional center. So that was, uh, the primary reason, that's a lot of work moving that data, and you don't do it just, just to be a backup.
Okay, um. And regarding the contract, um, what we saw, did you have any concerns with that?
Um, no, um, I, I had questions. Um, and once again, it was mostly around what happens at the end of the contract. Uh, but as I just explained, it, it's, it's not a contract as I had envisioned it. So I'm glad, you know, I was able to take a look at it, it is an intermunicipal agreement that is a shared, there's shared responsibility amongst the towns. They, and one of the things I really liked about the transition plan is if we sign this intermunicipal agreement, we join their advisory boards right away. So we, we're right in there making decisions on day one. And that is also the sign of a, a great deal of maturity, so I, I was very comfortable with that.
Okay, um. Sarah Melish.
Thank you. Um, Sarah Melish, eleven Bennett Street, um, also chair of the finance committee. Um, from a financial sense, the regional, moving to the regional is a no-brainer. And the finance committee, um, supported that unanimously. And the reasons are, is the state has a steady stream of income, dedicated income from the phone bills, so we don't feel it's likely they will charge us in the future. If they did, when we were originally talking, when it was county, the cost would be approximately eighty-four thousand eight hundred a year, which is, which is a very small amount. Um, we expecting a, a significant increase in town expenses coming up. Um, we're losing our reserve officers due to the changes in the, um, the state, um, police rules. The reserve officers have staffed six of our dispatch shifts a week. Um, that means we need to hire more full-time officers. Um, we added one position in the twenty twenty-three budget, we also added a position for a fireman in the twenty twenty-three budget, and probably more needed. Um, the school override is looming, that will be expensive for us. We have significant capital outlays coming up. Um, for the past few years, we've been using about a thou, about a million dollars a year from excess reserves, um, to fund our capital outlays. We don't have any excess on there. Um, we have future expenses like Sweeney Field, DPW, um, garage, public safety, and climate change residency. In order to meet all of those needs, um, we need to find money wherever we can find it in the budget, and it seems like dispatch is unfortunately a likely, thank you.
Thank you, Sarah, very much, um. Sandy Rogers.
Thank you, and thank you for all the due diligence, it's a really hard decision as a.
I'm sorry, Sandy, just state your name and your address.
Sandy Rogers, eighty-two Old Essex Road. Um, this was a really hard thing to vote on. Um, if you look at the immediate finances, it's overwhelming, it makes sense. The biggest issue is long-term. Um, there are no plans regarding what would happen if we have to get out of this contract.
Sandy, I'm going to stop you right there.
Saying, we have been told.
That's, that's, I'm sorry, but what you're saying right now, we have discussed about a contract at the end of which, if we do need to get out, but I'm sorry, what you're saying simply, honestly, does not have any real bearing on what is before us.
You haven't even listened to what I've said. I have said, we have been told that once we go into the contract, we cannot go back, and if you are doing.
Sandy. I will let you speak, but I would like you to please speak in a civil manner.
I'm, I'm trying, you were not even letting me finish my sentence, I was.
Better answer, better say her piece, this is ridiculous.
This is. So, we have, we do not have any contingency plan if there are any issues. We have seen time and time again with other people who have other towns who have gone this route, where they can't go back. We do not have an option to choose between what we have in this solution versus some other regional with another town, backup with Rockport, backup with another town, like Ipswich, who, who, who said that they weren't going in this direction. So from a long-term perspective, we're looking here at what will end up to be six and a half years on this contract. And once we push that button, we have been told by your board that we can't go back, and we should have an alternate plan to look at as a comparison, to know what would happen in a couple different major scenarios like that, that needs to be done. Playing the financial card, which, short-term and even long-term, when we're looking at um, climate change and what our town has to go through, um, the school system scenario, which Sue Melish brought up, is a major issue. But we're, as voters, are being asked to just go ahead and play for, pay for pickleball courts. This, the town needs to look at finances in a holistic view over a long-term scenario. And that has not happened with this scenario, as well as other scenarios that we're faced with. And I think that that is very important before you make any decisions, because according to your team, there's no turning back, and that is one of the major considerations. Even if we look at short-term finances, midterm finances, that is a key.
Sandy, you've had two minutes, over two minutes to speak.
That we have not gotten any information on, and there's, as planners for our town and representing us.
Sandy, I'm going to mute you because you've had over two minutes, someone else wants to speak.
Thank you.
So I'm going to let someone else speak now. Um, but before we do,
um, I think the contract actually does address the question of what happens next. Um, what happens if we decide to leave? Um, and, and that is that we would join some other PSAP, and it could be Hamilton, it could be Ipswich, so it is not that the world comes to an end if we decide that we need to leave.
Right, I agree. And just to, just to piggyback on what Ann is saying, if we can just take a step back, just for a minute, and think about why the state would do such a thing? Why would they not let us just go back to our own PSAP, our own, um, dispatch? Well, if you're running state nine one one and you have a major emergency, you don't want three hundred, how many towns do we have in Massachusetts? Three hundred and fifty-six, or three hundred and sixty-one towns and cities in Massachusetts. If you are dealing with a major emergency, it could be a snowstorm. You don't want MIMA to be dealing with three hundred and sixty-one access points, three hundred and sixty-one dispatch centers. They're not doing, they, they don't have this strategy because they're evil. They have this strategy because they're trying to keep us safe in the event of a major emergency. So they have that strategy with enticements, okay? Enticements, the carrot rather than the stick, okay? They're enticing towns to work together through intermunicipal agreements like this regional center so that we can reduce the number of dispatch sites, okay? Now, I don't know how long the state is going to use enticements and the carrot, but it's my understanding they issue licenses for dispatch. Is that correct, Chris? So, at some point, would they ever say, you know what, we're tired of waiting? Town X and town Y maybe ought to get together, and, you know, maybe they would say not be so enticing anymore and try to force towns to work together. And, and so, you know, you, once again, thinking about the big picture, why are they doing this? It's because it makes it easier for, for us to be safe in a, in a major emergency. I just, I just would like folks to keep that in mind, and also Ann's other point from earlier. If we keep dispatch in-house in order to get it anywhere near the level of capability that the regional center can offer for, for the fire department? I mean, the police department seems very content, and that's great. We're not in great shape, um, as far as what the fire department needs and, and the EMTs need. And in order to have those two dispatchers on twenty-four seven in our blessedly quiet dispatch center, I, I honestly don't know what those people would do all day. And, and is that fair to them, to hire, to hire people who are highly trained dispatchers and ask them to sit in our very quiet center all day? I, I just don't know how long that is, that would be feasible, so just, just a couple of things to keep in mind.
Can we ask Chief Fitzgerald to speak to that, as for what the dispatches do?
Um, yes, but first of all, I'm going to recognize, um, Rick Rogers. Rick, please state your address. You can unmute.
Yep, hi. Sorry, Rick Rogers, eighty-two Old Essex Road. Um, so I think that we or you need to recognize and remember that the town voted pretty strongly on this aspect, and I think that they are well-educated in why they voted, right? So we get that it can cost us more money, we get that the services could be different. Or, right, like, like, I, we all understand the benefits of making this change from a fiscal and organizational standpoint. But there is an important aspect to this town where we want to be perceived as a small town, as an independent town, as doing things our way on our time. And that's what I think a lot of this town voted for, because quite honestly, there's been a lot of discussion about this and a lot of understanding about this. And they know what they're getting into when they make this decision. So I think you really need to consider very carefully why people voted the way they did. It wasn't because of uneducation, it was because of a true desire to do it this way. And I think that, you know, I, I get that everyone wants to save money, and I get that everyone wants to stay safe. We all get that, but we realize that there's a way to do that within the current situation before we jump in with both feet on all of this. So that's my two cents, I think that the board needs to recognize that there's more to this than money and organization.
Thank you, Rick, um, you make a very good point, uh, regarding being the, the perception, the small town, and, and that is a very good point, and I, we all do appreciate that. And, and it's one of the things we love about it. Um, it is very much a decision of finances, it's also very much primarily a decision of safety. Um, and Brian, you asked that, that, um, Chief Fitzgerald respond to that, what his, what the, um, dispatchers do, and I think it's only fair to allow Chief Fitzgerald to say something. And after Chief, Chief Clary's reasoning as to why he feels, um, why he knows it's not working as well. Go ahead, Todd.
Yeah, so the question, what was the question, what the dispatchers do in their downtime, is that the question, just so I'm clear?
Uh, I think I asked the question, so if, if we add a second dispatcher, and the dispatch set, center is already pretty quiet, right? Um, what is that, if it's quiet now and you add another person, what are they going to do all day? Could you help us understand?
Well, I mean, typically, if you look at other departments, ours size, or agencies, or towns our size, they only have, they only run one, one dispatcher.
Can you just go ahead and answer in terms of two dispatchers on what they would be doing?
Well, typically, the, the dispatches, they obviously answer the business line calls, and they answer, uh, nine one one system. Uh, when there's an arrest, or, or, uh, here, they do prisoner watch, they assist officers with the completing, uh, uh, arrest folders and other clerical stuff for that, they call for bail, uh, they may need, um, uh, to assist sometimes with, uh, with booking if we have another dispatcher or a reserve officer or, or a part-time person here. Um, uh, and, you know, other things, uh, that are assigned by the sergeant or the OIC of the shift. They also, uh, update our records management system, continue to update our nine one one maps. They do quality assurance, uh, requirements per state, state nine one one. And they assist with filling details, manage public records. Um, and I could probably go on and on with, with, uh, some administrative tasks that they do. However, you know, there is downtime when there's not much, much to, much to do, but there are those times when they're, they're, uh, very busy and, you know, on, on the go for eight hours.
So are, are those duties specifically dispatch duties, or are they just helping out?
Well, some of it's helping out and some of it's dispatch duties, like the updating the records management system and the nine one one maps and the quality assurance on, on dispatch calls.
Excellent, good to know those are being maintained. Um, thank you, any other questions for the chief, John?
Um, I don't have a question for the chief necessarily, but I have something I might add to the discussion, if I may. Um, uh, it, it was brought up about what, what the plan B in going to, uh, in going to the, uh, regional operation. And I think we have to put it all in context of where this, what the state plan is, and as I think Kathy had mentioned, they really are encouraging, um, as many communities as possible to go into this regionalization, and over half of them in the, in Massachusetts already have done so. Essex County is a big place, we've got one in Middleton right now. But in six and a half years, how do we know that there's not going to be another regional operation somewhere in our county that will pop up? The average regional operation has about seven communities in it. That appears to be a, a, a sweet spot in terms of the number that can do that. There are many more communities than that in Essex County. And I would say that if we don't get. And I would say that if we don't get along with the people in Middleton, there are other, there are other regional operations. They don't necessarily have to be within our county that we could consider joining. Or perhaps there'll be a new one that will start within the next five or six years. So all of that is unknown. And to try and figure out what's going to be happening ten years out is hard no matter what, no matter what area you're looking at. And this is, we're, we're doing the best we can.
True. Thank you, John. I see Andrew, Christina and Mary. I'm going to go to Chief Clary first. And then once we've asked them to speak, then we'll come back to you all. Chief?
Well, good evening, folks. Just a couple of things I don't want to re-
Yep.
Sure.
We're losing you, chief.
And hello?
You froze.
You froze there for a bit. Looks like you're okay.
Okay, we'll try again. In the fire service, we do things to standards. And the National Fire Protection Association, NFPA, are the standards that we go by. The standard twelve twenty-one talks about communication centers. And the goal is to work towards what twelve twenty-one says. One of the major tenants of twelve twenty-one is that if you perform emergency medical dispatch, you need to have two dispatchers on duty at all the time. So that the call taker, when they realize it's a life and death situation, such as a cardiac arrest, can stay on the phone and give CPR instructions. Meanwhile, somebody has to be on the radio dispatching fire and police units as well as continuing the back and forth communication. One dispatcher cannot do both effectively. A second thing with NFPA twelve twenty-one, it talks about the safety of the dispatch building itself. With respect to the robust fire alarm, with respect to needing being a sprinkled building, needing to be hardened with bulletproof glass, both on the windows and doors, needing to be separated and secured so that people aren't passing through all the time. And that's something that would need to be done here that the regional already does. Another one that NFPA twelve twenty-one talks about is a firefighter mayday situation. Where a firefighter is trapped or lost, or something goes horribly wrong on a fire ground. NFPA twelve twenty-one says the incident commander, when they go to a mayday, needs a dedicated dispatcher to just the mayday and the rescue of the firefighters on a separate channel. This not undo fire and police radio traffic. How are we doing now?
You froze again.
Oh, sorry. I don't know what it is with my connection tonight. One dispatcher cannot stay on and run the mayday rescue on one frequency and then continue to talk to fire and police on two other frequencies. While phones are still ringing in the background and somebody may be coming to a window. And I know they talk about calling in extra dispatchers for large events. Most maydays occur within the first fifteen minutes of a fire. So we would only be on scene potentially five to ten minutes before we could have a mayday and know it's a major scene. At which point it could still be fifteen to twenty minutes when calling an off-duty dispatcher in to assist. And that could be too late. Also, computer-aided dispatch is very important. We currently don't have that system in town, although I know it would be a capital improvement purchase if we did stay. Redundancies, the regional has three, four different power supplies, four different internet providers, two different sets of antennas. We, we have one generator that could potentially flood and one internet provider currently. If it goes down, we're in trouble. We lose a lot of our system. And again, the standards, that's what we need to do, not just a good idea, not make it a little better. But the standards are in place to guarantee safety. Safety of the police officers, so they have a dedicated police dispatcher in case they get in trouble on a traffic stop or a serious domestic. One for fire if we have a mayday. And with two together or more, they can pick up where each other needs assistance and take over a call. Where if you have a single dispatcher, that's not possible. Another element to consider is for lack of a better word, upward mobility. Our, our dispatch center is capped. There are three full-time dispatchers. And historically, most of them move on to become police officers. That's what I did in my career at one point. So when somebody gets good and then decides they're going to leave, you have to start the training process over. It, it doesn't become a profession unto itself unless you have a robust or large enough dispatch center where people can move around, where they can stay busy by covering different communities, where they can graduate to the level of supervisor or even a director of a facility. And I don't foresee us ever rising to that level to create that type of succession planning or upward mobility. And again, with respect to the dark station, the, the fire station goes dark all the time and gets no complaints. If we're out on a call, somebody presses a buzzer in our front foyer and talks directly to a dispatcher. And that's how dispatch centers work with the regional when the station no longer has somebody sitting there to answer calls twenty-four hours a day. So it's about the police officer's safety, it's about the firefighter's safety. And it's about the degree and the level we get the information to be able to respond to the calls. The fire and police officers and paramedics know the town, we can respond there. The key element is from the nine-one-one call, the information the dispatcher is able to pull up immediately and relay to us. And, and that's the crux of, of the issue at hand. Thank you.
Thank you, chief. I'm going to go to the people with the hands up and very quickly before I do. Sandy Rogers, I owe you an apology for interrupting you several times. I'm very sorry I did that. I should not have done that. I thought you were going off topic and I should have let you speak before I jumped to that conclusion. Okay, we'll go to Andrew. Please state your full name and your address.
Thank you. Yes, Andrew Lane, Fifty Beach Street. And honestly, I'm just very surprised that it seems, at least from the comments tonight, that a majority of the board is, is leaning towards voting regional despite the fact that almost sixty percent of the voters want to keep it local. And also to say that we, we as voters don't have all the information, I think is just frankly like disingenuous. There have been countless meetings, plenty of information has been communicated. As Rick Rogers said earlier, you know, the vote, voters were educated on this. And we know all of the financial implications that were reiterated several times again tonight and which was detailed on the ballot. And, you know, we get it, we get, we need to spend money for upgrades. And we voted with that in mind and the results were clear. And, and to conclude, I just think it's really unwise for the board to go against the will of the voters. You know, you make decisions on our behalf and it just doesn't seem like that's the case here. Thank you.
Thank you, Andrew. To your point, I would like to say you stated incorrectly that sixty percent want to stay. There were thirty-five percent people of the voting people who voted of that fifty-seven percent.
I said nearly sixty percent of the voters.
Andrew, please do not interrupt.
Well, you're, you're misstating what I said.
Andrew.
You're misstating what I said. And I just wanted to clarify for-
Anyway, so it is not a majority of the town that wants to stay. And, and as discussed earlier, this is a non-binding vote that was asked. And the town was presented with a lot of information. However, what the town did not get was the benefit of having toured the North Shore nine-one-one. And I would say that if anybody is interested in that, I think it would be wonderful to do that, to really get a, a complete and full picture. Also regarding the voting, we are, yes, we are elected. What we are elected to do, and I'll repeat this from the very beginning, that I, you may not have been able to be here at that time, but what we are charged with doing as the select board is to make the decisions, and I quote, "based on facts, data and logic, even when these decisions are unpopular." That comes out of the Massachusetts Municipal Association handbook for select boards. And it's it's what we're elected to do. And sometimes it's not what some people think is right. Christina? Unmute yourself quick. There you go.
Okay, great. Thank you. Christina Delissio, Six Lincoln Ave. So in light of trying to keep this brief, I will not reiterate, but I am concerned that the town voted. And just to backtrack Becky to one of your first statements is that the voters did not have all the information. Could you just then clarify, why did we go to a meeting without all the information? We have a website, we have staff to keep the town informed. I felt I was informed, the ballot was pretty clear, yes, go to regional, no, spend some money. So what information specifically do the voters not have that you have that make you more informed to make this decision? Thank you.
Thank you. That's a very good question, Christina. And, and basically it's the year's worth of thirteen years' worth of information negotiations that predate this, this time that regional, the discussion was brought forward. And that was an unfortunate choice of words on my part to say that you don't have all the information. All the information is there, however, it might have be harder to parse through. I, I, I find it very difficult when people are saying that, that we as a board should disregard what our finance committee has recommended, what a significant portion of public safety indicates we need. But again, I, I apologize, no, information is there if ever, but everybody's able to go through it. And I in no way mean to imply that, that anybody's capabilities are deficient in any way.
Excuse me, Becky, the tours were one area that may be a different factor.
And, and yes, Kathy stated that the tours, as I did mention a few minutes ago, are a huge component of broader and fuller understanding. Anybody else? Okay, Mary Foley, please state your address.
Mary Foley, One Pulaski Drive. Quick question for you because I think a certain term is being conflated with another term. And I just want some clarity since you folks do have the, the data. So as of 2020, the regional emergency community centers, there was nineteen. This is off of mass.gov. You might have more up-to-date information. But of the RECCs, how many are actually state-run? I think we're conflating regional communication centers with state-run centers. So, and they can be vastly different. So how many are actually state-run RECCs? Thank you.
Thank you, Mary. Good point. And yeah, there are distinct differences and, and the North Shore nine-one-one did bring that up as well when we were in the tour. I don't have the exact numbers down and I'm not really sure how that would-
So I think the, the state nine-one-one website has a map of Massachusetts. It has a legend on it which regional centers are state-run and which are not. I don't recall the number.
Yeah, I've seen that map, but it doesn't, at least the map I've seen, it doesn't clarify state-run. So I know you've done your due diligence and, and, you know, are really seem to be gearing towards the state regional center. So I think it's an important piece to know how many other communities are going under the fold of the state-run. So if you could get that data, that would be great.
I, go ahead. Becky, what I would like to know is why that's important. I was going to ask the same thing. Mary, I don't really understand the relevance.
In my mind, it's in- Do you want to know why I think it's important? In my mind, it's important because I know at the beginning of this, you were talking about more of a municipalities getting together and defining the contract. At least all I've read of this Middleton, which is a state-run agency, the state does dictate any costs and such items. And if it's a true regional center, the municipalities do it amongst themselves, so not through the state.
So, so I, I do, I'm very sure that at our meeting last week, the state nine-one-one leader said there was at least one other state-run center and it was in the south, I want to say the southern part of the state. Because that is where, I think it was the town of Sherborne.
That's western.
Oh, western. I'm sorry. So maybe it's the southwestern, southwestern part of the state. There was at least one other regional center that had a town they were onboarding for the beginning of next year. So I'm, I don't know how many state centers there are, but there, I believe there is at least one other one.
Okay, so as of now, we just know that there's two. Is that correct?
I just don't have the numbers in front of me. No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Greg, can you get that information for Mary? Okay, Mary, we will get that information to you.
Yeah.
Yes.
One difference between a state-run center and a, and an aggregation of towns is that the state is using the money from a tax on cell phones to run their centers. Whereas the towns have to come up with the funds to run their own centers. Which is why I wondered why it was important. And I guess if you want to pay for the service, you should go to a conglomeration of, of towns. Whereas at the moment, we're being offered something that is fun, that we're already paying for. That's, and therefore it will not cost the town extra.
Let's see, we will take the hands that are up at this point and we're just going to try to get through these last few. Mike, please unmute yourselves, state your name and address.
Hi Becky, Mike Ross, Marin, Crooked Lane. You used a term earlier today of best interest of the town, not a subsection. Yet there was thirty-five percent voter turnover, turnout rather. And I heard from the board in a previous meeting that that was a high percentage for a town vote. So it's not necessarily a subsection, it's a higher percentage that normally would come out to vote. I'm not sure how the board is using the term fiduciary responsibility. But having been part of a public company and having responsibility like that, one of the obligations that we had under fiduciary responsibility was obedience to the shareholders. It was, that was the term that was used, obedience to the shareholders. So we were required to operate while there's, how the shareholders voted. And in this instance, their shareholders appear to be the town, the town voters. So I don't see much of a differentiation there. My sad point in this is appears to me that the board walked into this meeting with a predetermined- with a predetermined outcome versus listening to the people again on how we are trying to say what we want the board to do. That's it.
Thank you, Mike. Um, I certainly came in here, um, with ready to make a decision based on what we've been poring over for some time. The definition of, of fiduciary that I was going by was from Webster's, and perhaps I should look at a few others, but that was the one I was going by. Um, and I do understand there are different applications of fiduciary or being a fiduciary. Um, I still stand by the definition as I read it. Um, and that our responsibility is to the town, the entire town's best interest, um, as well as what the Mass Municipal Association Select Person's Handbook tells us we're supposed to do.
Okay.
But I, I do, I respect what you said, and, and, um, I, I appreciate that, Mike, thank you. I'm going to go on to Amy Battis now. Amy, please, uh, state your name and address.
Sure, I'm Amy Battis from, uh, twenty-three Desmond, and I guess I have one question. Um, I'm wondering if the board had given any thought to engaging with a, a public safety communications consulting firm or consultants. Um, we know they exist, we've found reports done in the past that Manchester was the subject of, and to Kathy's point that everything pre-2019 now is beyond stale. Maybe taking a, an independent, disinterested look with a consultant might be worth the, the time and the, the small financial output. I worry a little bit about counting on a quote feasibility study coming from the regional center, because that's sort of akin to walking into Ira Toyota and asking them, do I need a new car? Of course, they're going to tell you, you need a new car, they're in the business of selling cars. So I'm a little bit concerned that maybe we don't know what we don't know, we only know what history has told us in negotiating with the previous people in Middleton and, um, what Middleton is telling us now. Um, I guess I just throw that, throw this out there as maybe one last um, due diligence, point of due diligence that we could do to be more secure in the decision.
Thank you, Amy.
Wasn't there some other, um, consulting? I, I don't know if it was from the fire department or something, some other consulting, um, reports or, or investigations that
Chief Clary has his hand up.
Yeah.
Chief?
That already did that?
Uh, there have been at least two independent studies that were done that recommended, uh, it didn't recommend the, the North Shore Regional, but recommended that if a regional dispatch center did become available, that it would be a good option for the fire department to take advantage of that and join the regional. There were two studies, one done by MRI, and they might, both might have been done by MRI at separate times. But it did not call out a center by name and say this one or that one, just adopting the regional concept based on how the fire department operates and what the needs were. Um, the only second point is, when somebody's trying to sell you a car, they're trying to make money. The states already made the money and aren't going to make any more money off it, they're just offering a service for what we're already paying for. Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Um, Chief Fitzgerald? You're muted.
Sorry, yeah, I was going to comment on that study, that study was the MRI study, uh, back in twenty fifteen, so that to your point, could be outdated at the, this, this point. Uh, and it did, like Chief Clary said, uh, caution the town on regionalizing with Middleton at that point, when it was run under the sheriff's department.
Thank you, Chief. Okay, two more comments. Um, Sandy Rogers, go ahead and unmute.
Great, thanks, Sandy Rogers, eighty-two Old Essex Road. I have a question. There was a feasibility study done, uh, back in two thousand seventeen about joining the regional dispatch with Danvers-Hamilton, um, combining Manchester in two thousand seventeen, and it was overwhelming around the financials and some of the technical aspects, that it did recommend some level of, of regional. And wanted to know why that was a, a, either a second one or a third one that's been done over the past decade around dispatch. Why all of these have been, um, decided that that was not the way to go? And why we are doing this now? Why now? Why, or what has changed? Um, technically, it would be really good to know, thank you.
Greg?
Sure, um, so the, so that I believe there were three studies done, one sort of early on, when the, when the sheriff started the, operating the, the regional center. Um, there was a study that, as you just mentioned Sandy, that was done in seventeen, that looked at alternative regional, which was for the, as you said, Danvers and, and Hamilton potentially. The reason that did not go forward was because there were no dollar savings involved. Um, and, and no appreciable increase in, in service, in other words, they were still offering the one dispatcher. Um, they weren't offering two dispatchers twenty-four seven, they had some, some high times where they had two dispatches, but it wasn't twenty-four seven. Um, so at the time, it was felt that that was not enough of a, a gain for basically, I think it was going to cost a few more dollars than they're already paying. And, and then the study to, to move to regional, when it was so under the sheriff, um, the decision was not to go forward with that because of, uh, the many concerns of this, what I would call the startup challenges that the sheriff had, um, in, in creating a, a very high-functioning, um, dispatch operation. So there were, there are drawbacks to both, uh, the non-state regional and the state, it wasn't state, it was sheriff at the time, there were drawbacks to both of those options that made the board at the time decide not to go forward.
Yeah, I think you should look at those, because some of those were definite money savings that I have seen, so I've been looking at the, the reports um, regarding the amount of coverage, that's another item, which is safety and very important, but, um, I think that, um, we have to be very clear when we're stating what was actually quoted regarding savings or not, because you're using savings here as, as a key um, element of, of a decision, and I think it's very important that you look at those other studies, thank you.
Thank you, Sandy.
Yeah, that, when, the, the study that looked at going to the sheriff, there was about a fifty percent savings over what, I'm being, rounding, but my memory is that it was roughly in that ballpark area, about a fifty percent savings. Again, the decision was that, yes, that was a savings, but it wasn't enough to justify going into a system that there are too many, um, question marks.
Okay.
My, my recollection, um, is that there was also a question of control in the, um, in the study of, of Hamilton, Danvers. Um, I, maybe I'm mis, misremembering, but I, there we would be a customer rather than an owner.
Correct, it was more a service provided, contractor service rather than but I think they were also willing to talk about that, that wasn't, uh, that wasn't cast in stone.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, I have two more hands up, I'm just, we'll, we'll take these two hands, and then we will have a vote. Um, Susan Harrington, go ahead and unmute yourself and state your address, please.
Susan Harrington, zero Woodhome Road. From what I've heard, uh, this evening, and the information that the, that the select board has received, uh, after the regional center, um, I would hope that, um, perhaps the board would, would consider another vote of the residents, considering that the voters turned out um, pretty well, then as well as we would all hope, but still in favor of keeping the dispatch local, thank you.
Thank you. Sarah Pierce?
Hi, yes, Sarah Pierce, nine Friends Street. Uh, that was actually going to be one of my comments, um, or questions with, would the board consider having a binding vote on this subject? Because I feel, I feel like this topic, which is of course very important to the whole town, the public safety, I don't, from a resident standpoint, see any issues besides a financial piece that residents may very well be willing to take on. Um, I've lived here for forty years, we've never had an issue, we've never read about an issue. Um, I'm kind of a little confused with Kathy Bellata's argument about people sitting there, doing nothing, yet we need to ship this out to a larger facility that can handle more. Um, to stay on point though about the meeting, we asked taxpayers to come out to a meeting and vote, and they did, and I, from my understanding, our tax-paying dollars is what pays for the financing for these positions and extra police and dispatch people that would be hired. So I think it's really truly important for the Board of Selectmen to listen to the people tonight who are the residents, who do pay tax dollars towards these issues and positions, and also, when you ask people to come out to a meeting, they may not have that information or understand that, that that's not a binding vote, but I would, I would highly recommend that another vote be taken. And I did just have one question that's kind of a sideline, I, I wanted to know, I tried to look on the town website, how many residents do we have right now in Manchester by the sea? Because the last time it was updated was two thousand eighteen.
We are roughly fifty-five hundred.
Try around fifty-five.
It's, it's roughly that.
Okay, thank you.
Now, those are all residents, not just voting residents, but all. All right, Sarah, thank you. Regarding another vote, I, I, we could another vote, and another vote, and another study, and, and while I don't think it's necessarily a wrong idea, it's, it's further delaying what has been delayed. And, um, there are some significant safety concerns um, that need to be addressed. Um, so if the vote is to stay in town, it's not just a matter of, okay, well, let's throw another dispatcher at it, it's and not that it's not doable, but it will be a lot of money, and, and not that that's the only factor, but it does boil down to appropriate levels of safety. Um, thank you, everybody, for your thoughts and comments this evening. And Kathy, did you want to respond to the comment about the dispatcher?
So my comment around the dispatcher was, if it's quiet, if the current in-house dispatch operation is very quiet, and you take the time and trouble to hire, how many more people? Three more people to cover?
Well, plus we already have one dispatcher who is leaving in the fall, and I had heard there might be another one.
So we know, we would have to hire three more people, train them up, right? To sit in a very quiet place. And it's my understanding dispatchers are highly trained individuals, and quite frankly, if they have the choice to work in a very quiet place and do very little dispatching, or go work in Middleton, um, we would actually be competing against the, the Regional Center for Resources, number one, but I, I just don't understand how that would be a fulfilling role for someone who's highly trained and to, to be in a place where they would not get to use their skills very often. I, I can't imagine how satisfying that would be, and I think the human factor here is also a consideration. And it's, it's a great economy right now, and, and, uh, you know, competition is tough for resources, so if we keep it in-house, then we have to hire three more people, we're competing with a well-run, sophisticated operation, and
It, it, it's, it's three more people plus forty-eight hours.
Yeah. It's, it's a lot.
Starting packages, but it's, it's also
It's a lot, yeah, yeah.
I'm sorry.
No, go ahead.
It's not just the people that we need to, we would need to hire, we need to address the physical facility, we need to address the equipment, we need to address the, the, um, records management aspect. The oversight aspect. Uh, there are many components to this that are not just a matter of, all right, well, let's upgrade a computer and hire a few more people. It's significantly bigger than that, and I haven't heard people talk about that component tonight, and that's, that's concerning. The, the depth and breadth of what needs to be done to bring our current dispatch to a level of safety that all safety officers in this town are comfortable with, not one component, all components. So with that, um, I think it's time for us to take a vote. I would like to say that my vote in no way is being done to disregard what the peo, a portion of the people feel. Um, but I, my vote will be one that is for the best, long-term, responsible interests of our town. Um, so with that, I would ask for a motion. If anybody wants to make a motion.
Try, um, I will set the Board of Selectmen um, negotiate with the, uh, regional 911 with the intention of joining, um, of engaging their services. That's not quite right. Um, that that we go forward with joining the regional 911. So I move that the Board of Selectmen vote to join the regional 911 in Middleton.
Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, um, motion moved by Ann Harrison, second by Kathy Bellata, John Round? Oh, wait, thank you, sorry, my bad. Discussion, any further discussion? John Round? Oh, sorry, sorry, yep. Hold please, okay, there you go.
Yes.
Okay. Kathy Bellata?
Yes.
Brian Solacy?
No.
Ann Harrison?
Yes.
And Becky Jakes votes yes, that is for in favor of joining uh, North Shore 911, regaling, regionalizing, and one against. Okay. Thank you all very much for attending, and now we will be discussing, uh, board process and information flow and scheduled future agenda for public input. Nobody wants to say? Nobody wants to say? Okay. Preliminary discussion. Greg and I have been chatting about trying to potentially come up with some hours. And my initial thought was that the chair could be at Town Hall or somewhere for one day a week for a certain amount of time. Kathy also came up with that, with an idea of meeting with people. And I'm, but I like the idea that it not just be one person, that, that any, any board member who would like to take time to be at Town Hall. And my initial thought was maybe we could do a Thursday evening, say, five to six, something like that. So it's after work for some people. And, and depending upon how that goes and how it's received, perhaps we could expand upon that if needed.
The Town Hall's, Town Hall is open at that point, too, right?
Well, on Thursdays, they're openly.
I know the Chief at St. Gerolfinde does his coffee with the Chief kind of thing. I don't know how successful it is. I don't know if anyone shows up. Maybe if he supplies coffee.
I don't know. Chief, do you supply coffee at your coffee with Chief?
I can.
Good answer. So maybe we'll have like afternoon tea with the selectmen. I'm just kidding. So.
We could have a...
You can have, say again?
No.
No. So along those lines, I, I also wanted to discuss, before I open it up to the board, the, the, the element of transparency. And that, too, is completely discussed clearly in the Mass Municipal Association and, and what that actually means. And we are that. It's, it's, we're not having clandestine meetings or whatever. It's, but if you've not had an opportunity to read through the MMA handbook, especially as it pertains to meetings and transparency, it's, it's a it's a good thing to do, to, to understand what it means. And then as far as the Board processes and information, that's why I asked Greg to send the flow chart. So that, especially because Kathy and Brian, you're new members and understand just how the boards and committees function and the oversight of the boards and boards and committees.
No, I'm due, I need an opportunity.
And this is not all of them, from what I understand.
It's not all of them.
No, we have
Even more.
A plethora.
And, and many, many volunteers, which is just, you know, remarkable. When you think about the number, percentage of people in this town that volunteer, it's really remarkable. But did anybody, I know what, you know, how I see how we process in terms of getting information out to people. Did anybody else have any other thoughts? John? I know. Unmute.
Okay, there we are. Okay. All right. Yeah, a couple, a couple of thoughts. I think we have to be, do a little bit better of an effort of going out and meeting people where they are. There was a suggestion about maybe setting up something at these concerts at Masco. What about setting up some sort of a table, like the first Saturday of each month, in front of the post office? And, you know, just, so, so it doesn't have to be an official meeting. There could be no more than two of us at any time.
Did you hear what Brian said?
What'd he say?
I suggest that, that's a great idea. You can have December, January, and February.
All right. I'm not saying every month, but I'm saying probably six of them anyway.
No, I think that's a nice idea, John.
With coffee, as a matter of fact, the Chief's suggestion there, I'm all for that. But I I, there's no question, I think you would engage more people if you do something like that, especially if you have coffee, than you would setting up and saying, okay, Thursdays, you know, one Thursday a month at the Town Hall. The only folks that are going to come by are people that happen to be there to do some sort of other business, and, and they happen to see that you're there. But I think trying to get people to show up because, oh, the selectmen are going to be there, that's a tough sell. So weather permitting, I think first Saturdays of each month or something like that would make sense.
I would also suggest, I think Kathy understands this, get a dog. Walk your dog.
I got a cat. I don't think that's going to work.
But how many people you talk to when you're about walking the dog?
A lot.
Yeah. I see the dog. Every morning I'm out walking my dog. I'm, I'm stopped dumping dogs every morning. It's amazing how many people pull you aside.
Yeah, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
In Crosby's?
Crosby's.
Alan's post office, yes. Well, and that's, but I, I, that's a really good point, John, about as opposed to, you know, going, I'm not convinced that we don't have somewhere for people to meet us when they want, but that we don't do that. But I, I really like your idea of us going out to them.
Being more visible.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's a really nice idea.
No, there's the Festival by the Sea.
Yeah.
Everybody moves breakfast, you know. I'll be at both. You know, as a boat chairman, I'll be out there serving food and working. And I think it's, it's, especially coming off the last two years of virtual meetings, okay? We're two-dimensional, and it's time to start becoming three-dimensional and getting out there and listening to what people have to say in an informal environment.
That's, and there are certainly plenty of events or situations where we can go. And we, we do go. I mean, I, I had one today and last week of, you know, being out. And personally, I really enjoy those. It's just so nice to be out and about. And it gives people a chance to say nice to you about. And I think that's part of that small town. That's, that's very important. Right, so John, I like that idea. And anybody else?
Yeah, just some, I guess, you're, you're very right that we give the townspeople a lot of information. And sometimes there is such a thing as data overload, right? And there's so much information coming at people, perhaps it's like a fire hose. And when we have our retreat, maybe we could discuss some, you know, simple collateral, you know, one-pagers that might help communicate pertinent facts to people so that if they're jumping into a conversation midstream, like some of these big things we've been discussing have been going on for years. But let's say you just moved to the town, or just, you know, retire and suddenly have more time. It can be hard to enter into the conversation in the middle. So if you have some standard collateral, a little more graphical in nature, that says, hey, this is the whole process that we're going through, and we're here, you know, like they have at the mall. And then at least it helps level set people. Oh, I missed two years' worth of conversation. I, I, I might need to get up to speed. Just maybe we can discuss some, you know, collateral that might be helpful to...
Yeah, that's...
Sure.
So Greg, you'll be able to jotting these down for us to think?
Yeah, yeah. Did you write a part about getting a dog?
I did.
There are two at my house.
We haven't subsidized getting dogs for all this luck work.
Yeah, there we go.
We'll be service dogs.
Ann?
I'm sorry. I'm, I'm...
Dog was at the moment, precious.
Oh, no, I'm so sorry.
We've got her for one, sorry.
We're going to move right on to another topic, right?
Good.
Okay, so back to this. So I would say that, and I, I, I like that, that we discussed this at the retreat. I think we can talk a little bit more about that. So I, I would like to touch on that as well at the retreat regarding how we can get across understanding what transparency means in the eyes of the state and, and how that applies to us and, and all the boards and committees. Does that make sense? Do you think? Or is that something that?
Yeah, I think that the concern has always been perceptions, reality. Okay. And we may feel that we're being very transparent. Okay. And, but if there's a perception that we're not, then that's a real, that's real.
So the question is?
How.
How?
We're going to talk about that.
Because that's, that, that's, that's the big...
Well, I mean, I've, I've heard it, you know, that's, there's a reason why we're talking about it now. Because you've heard it on the streets for the last two years, I'm sure.
Oh, two?
Three, five, hello, thirteen.
Forever. Although, actually, no, I retract that because I don't recall hearing issues of that when we first moved to town. I think when you had less of the, the instant sort of communication and the social media.
It's going to be the death of civilization. Okay.
Well, it means we, we, it's there. So to ignore it, we do so at our, at our peril. It, it, it must be managed like a tool, like any tool. And, you know, perhaps we're...
So as an IT professional, that's your job.
Well, you know, it's like, it's, it's really all about the policies. I know.
That's, yeah.
Do we have, I know, Ann, you've been working diligently on policy. Do we have a social media policy?
No. No. And, and the first reaction when I heard about it was, don't go near there. It's a bad place. You shouldn't follow it. You're just going to get hurt. And that was, in my opinion, the wrong tactic. And I do follow social media closely and try to inject at least my understanding of reality from time to time. But I don't think we can manage it. It cannot be controlled. And, and I think that we can get ourselves in a fair amount of trouble by interfering too much.
I'm just saying, I get, manage might have been the wrong word, but I guess, I'll just say that in, in the, in the private sector, a lot of folks have social media policies. And it's not to restrain speech, it's to provide guidance. Because in, in that world, which is different than this world, there are, there's intellectual property to protect. But there's also a lot of phrasing around respectful discourse. And so that, some of that, you know, from a board standpoint.
I don't think the board has the responsibility to enforce respectful discourse on Facebook.
I'm not trying to, I'm not suggesting we do that for citizens. That, if that was, that is not what...
Okay.
What I was suggesting is that social media is a tool, whether or not we like it, right? And we do have Tiffany publishing certain things on the town channels, right? And that's, I think that's been very effective. Perhaps there are other things that we could post on there that we're not right now. And so that, it's, it's a tool. And that's all I'm suggesting. We, we take a fresh look at it. Are there other things we could be using it for? I'm not in, in any way suggesting that we want to, you know, squash speech and discussion. That's not my suggestion.
I did not, I did not hear that from you. I mean, example being have the, the Mass Municipal statement about fiduciary responsibilities. Okay.
That was actually, yeah, that was a different spot.
No, no, had that perhaps been posted a lot sooner? Or, okay, the comment made a lot sooner as to how the decisions are being made. Okay. Get that up. And, and I don't know how you do that. Does Tiffany do that? Do we, do we need a public relations firm?
Well, no, but actually, that, that was a very important phrase you just mentioned. And it gets, I think, to the heart of what is transparency? How are the decisions being made? And I don't think that's something we, we publish on social media. And I think sometimes when we are in a process of making decisions, it can get confusing if people are just joining, you know, meetings two weeks ago, but they couldn't, they didn't have time to join the next meeting. So there's that continuity of information. And, and how decisions are made, I think that's a really important phrase, Brian. And if we can help the residents understand that better through whatever channel, whatever communication channel, I think that can only help us.
Well, that's one of the items under this preliminary discussion is Scheduled Future Agenda for Public Input. And it's, we've all been on the other end of being the public. But I don't know if you all feel this way, but after as many years on other boards and this board, while I definitely understand how it's difficult for anybody to get all the information and, and, and clear pictures, I try to remember that, but it is easy to forget that completely, to really understand how difficult it is unless you are sitting in on every single meeting. So to that, the agenda for getting public input on, on, on how they feel would best help them to understand the process that this board goes through to make decisions and, and how and why. Is that something we should also do on the retreat? Or do we want?
Maybe we could pick a specific topic. For example, I think we can all acknowledge that this coming year is going to be a terribly difficult budget decision, right? So maybe we could, you know, kind of outline for the town, here's the process we intend to go through to bring you a budget at town meeting. Okay, we're going to start here. We're going to do these things. And, and be specific about when public input is, you know, you know, terribly important, you know, early on. Just kind of outline a process and get a feedback on it.
Later.
Yeah. To that point, it's the ADHDME. Sarah Melish has done a phenomenal job for the 40B. Okay. We're only going to talk about this, okay? And then we're going to close public comment. Now, it's taken forever. It's, it's, it's six months of my life I'm never going to get back. All right, to, to Wednesdays.
I understand that well.
But what she has done is that this is what we're going to discuss tonight, and that's all we're going to take. I'm not going to talk about anything else. And people, we have, I can't speak very well. I have a very short attention span. Matter of fact, I'm already bored with this conversation. But the, but we bite, take it off in little bites, okay? I don't know, I don't like how Sarah did it. And then move on, especially when it comes to the, the, the budget issues. Next week, all we're going to talk about is this.
I agree. And, and I think, though, setting the stage for that is
That is what we do, actually.
Yeah, it is. It's, it's the high-level process.
Get the word up now, though.
Right. So each individual meeting, the finance committee, they talk about one thing at a time, right?
Sometimes two or three, but
Two or three, right.
In series.
But I, I, you know, I, just over the past, you know, few weeks since I've been on the board, I've been meeting with town employees, and I have learned things about how the town approaches bud- budgeting. And I dare say, there are fifty-five hundred, I don't know how many adults are in the town, but there are probably a few other folks like me who aren't familiar with the entire process and where public input could be enhanced, especially at the beginning, before we get down to the nitty-gritty. could be, um, enhanced, especially at the beginning, before we get down to the nitty gritty, right? And I feel we don't have alignment at the beginning, perhaps, maybe on, on, on the priorities, et cetera. So there's a, there's a high level process that maybe we could kind of talk through a little bit. Anyway, those are my thoughts.
I mean, it, it's, and, and this is to, to your point, process, you know, Anne and I have been on boards for years.
Twenty years in my case.
Yeah, and, and fifteen, maybe more, I don't remember. But anyway, but, but my point, um, is, what was my point?
My words.
Yeah, no, but, um, how, how we're always trying to get information out there. And somehow we just can't seem to be as effective broadly as we want to be. I mean, I get, I get the tide update, you know, Tiffany gets those out. And, and there's information that, that's on the website. Um, and as you said, Greg, yes, we need to fine tune the website even more. And I, I guess that's why it's important, not I guess, but that is why it's good to get the public input. Somebody who tries often to get information and feels that they're not successful.
Is that the problem or that do you think that they don't, they think they're not heard?
You know, that's a good point. And I, I think, for example, tonight is a very good example. We made a decision and some people are, there will be people who are feel, they will feel they weren't heard because they did not want us to vote this way, the way it went. And so they will feel they were unheard. So I think that, I think John wants to be unmuted. Go for it, John.
I guess I'll leave myself permanently unmuted and then that won't, won't be.
Exactly. Do not mute yourself.
All right, I'm not touching that button anymore. One observation that I've got here is, uh, I don't know how many voters we have in town, but, you know, several thousand. And they all come into the discussion at different points.
Yeah.
And as a result, you know, you have one discussion in month one with, these are the folks that are hot on what's latest on the press and what we're dealing with. And then three months later, there are some other folks that may come in the mix and, you know, it's like you're having to reiterate it. It wasn't that out there, didn't people understand? But, uh, that's just the way of populations and this is the way people operate. Everybody comes in at, at different times. And that's never going away. We just, we just have to deal with that and know that various people picked up on various little facts, various times. And if they were not in the discussion when that was, that was announced, well, that little piece of the, piece of the puzzle is not gonna be there for them. So, uh, a lot of this frustration is, I wouldn't say a lot, but it's, you know, human nature is a factor here. And it's always gonna be with us. So I, I think that we're doing, uh, we can always do a better job, but we're doing a relatively a, a good job here. It's just that you're, you're dealing with people that, uh, come in at different times.
I think that's a good point, John. And, and, and you're right, we're, you know, we're just not going to be perfect. Um, what do they say? Perfect is the enemy of.
Good enough.
Good enough. Not that we want to just be good enough, but perfect, perfect is the enemy.
I just have one more question, um, if I could, as in preparation for this discussion at the retreat. In talking with a number of folks, it's my understanding that, you know, a lot of good work is being done at a detailed level on the master plan, right? Trying to move us forward. But it's my understanding, the way this process was supposed to work is there was the visioning session and that document. And then there was the master plan. And then there was supposed to be an implementation plan with roles and responsibilities outlined. And, but that wasn't approved. It, it got swallowed up by COVID, okay? And it's my understanding that that has been drafted. And to me, that feels like an opportunity to get alignment on a lot of things that we're supposed to. We said we wanted to do as part of the master plan. And I feel like it's a gap and that we went from the master plan right to the details of, you know, services and zoning, and it feels like there's this big gap here that we didn't talk about as a town. So I'm wondering if that could be a helpful thing to just get it updated. And I know Sue Brown had a draft and, um, anyway, just a thought for discussion.
So bring that into the retreat for further discussion.
It should be validated. Um, any strategy should be validated periodically anyway.
This is so good. I mean, this perspective has, is, is really helpful. So, so far I have, I have on the retreat four ideas, just so I'm making sure that we're getting this down. I'm discussing transparency. Uh, two, talking about getting out meet and greet. Um, or how we want to potentially implement that. Three is how are the decisions being made? And four, the master plan implementation, getting that brought forward for approval. Okay, anything else that I'm missing?
I would broaden the discussion of the master plan.
Okay.
Validate it, kind of checkpoint and see where we're in.
Nobody voted for it.
I thought this board approved it.
Yeah. What I, what I mean is the town.
Yes, 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 I agree.
And, and I think there are things in it that many citizens would find surprising.
I agree with you. I, I think, I think, and that brings up a good point of some of the other topics we just discussed. When there's a lack of transparency or people feel like they're not being heard.
Perceived lack.
Perceived lack of transparency or people feel like they may not be heard, that, that is often a signal.
They should be asked.
It's often a signal of, um, misaligned expectations somewhere. And, um, another way to take a look at that all as well is, um, roles, clear roles and responsibilities. Outline, when, when should people, when are, when are boards or individuals responsible for something? When are they consulted and their, and their input is requested versus when are they not part of the decision-making process? And they're just informed as to what happens, clarifying that. Um, so maybe that's how we could tackle that. How, how do we make decisions? There's some, some, you know, techniques we can talk about there to maybe help with that, but I agree with you, Anne, that's a.
That's good.
Really.
All right, broaden that. John?
Yeah, there's, there's one other thing that, uh, is crossing my mind, um, in terms of the organizational chart that we've got. And amongst us as selectmen, I don't know how many of us know all of the people that head all of these departments. There's no formal introduction for folks. Now, I know most of them, but there were two or three that I have not met and I've been around for a couple of years. Um, and it's just the topics haven't come up that haven't involved them one way or another. But, um, we should think about some sort of way of getting everyone here on the board to know, uh, all of the folks that run all of these departments, one, two, three, four, five, six, eight, nine, whatever, something like that. And, you know, at one point in time, I just kind of wandered around the town hall and walked in from one room to another. And, uh, said hello, some of the folks I already knew before, before all of this, but there were several I did not. So I, I think that we ought to set up some sort of thing for folks just, uh, you know, every year or something.
And those do change, so.
They do. They do change.
No, and, and, and even, you know, I've gone to the police department, fire department several times, down to talk to Bion. Um, but to that, to that point, I mean, I, I wouldn't, I don't know all the police officers personally, um.
I don't know if that's critical, but the top, top two or three, we should.
Yep, yep. All right, so how?
Maybe we should use Bion's pizza day and ask that the heads of departments and the select board and anybody else should come to that.
Wander through.
But don't wander through, eat his pizza, it's really good.
Well, he's a good cook. They make bread. Where is Bion right now? Bread, cookies, all of a sudden I'm getting hungry.
I will say this, my discussions, there was a perception of a disconnect between town halls and select work.
Any, and not, not, not asking you to answer which, but, but is that a prevalent or are you?
So I think so.
Interesting.
Yeah.
Yeah, I, I haven't heard that myself, um, since I was elected. I've set up individual meetings with a lot of these folks. I've got some more to do. But what I just do is I just ask them one question. What do you want me to know? I'm a newbie here. What do you want me to know? And, and then that just gets.
I'm not here to do your job.
And, and so they, um, it gets the discussion going and I, I learned a lot. And, and I have to say, I'm also very impressed with the people that I've met. We have a really great team.
Well, but it's, it's back to the organizational chart. You know, it's, it's important for us to also understand our lane. And, and Greg oversees the staff. That's not our job.
Right.
That is not what we're supposed to do. And, um, but there, there is a way, you know, I mean, if there's an issue, then, then people can come to the board. But, but that's, that's Greg's purview and not.
Question, okay. People, I can't speak for anyone else, or asking, we'll ask you a question. Might be a mundane question, but it's a question that's important to them. Okay? I don't have an answer. They expect me to get an answer. Do we go to you, Greg, with all these insignificant questions that are important to someone else?
What do you?
Well, for instance, what I, the, the email I sent you this morning. Okay, so you're okay with that kind of?
Yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's fine.
That's, no, you don't need to explain.
No, no, I just, but I don't want to be, I mean, I don't want to step on toes. I don't want to, uh, go after department heads, asking for question, asking for answers.
Right.
Uh, you know, the, the big thing yesterday was the, uh, the traffic down, uh, road app.
Yeah.
Okay, uh, we're copying on it, we read it, how are we supposed to respond? Are we just be aware of it?
Typically, um, typically the chair is the one who concerns like that should go to. If you get an email from somebody, it should be forwarded to the chair. And then Greg and I are the ones who communicate. And what this does is it, it's to keep things, I guess, too many fingers in the pies. Um, and, and keep things clear. The, one of the reasons I wanted this chart brought up was so that people could, could kind of get an idea of who oversees what. So basically Greg oversees, um, the higher staff. And we, I, I, we don't really oversee Greg, but he does report to the board. And, and if there are concerns, people would come to the board.
It, it, this is probably a stupid nit, but I don't see the Board of Selectmen and the Finance Committee being parallel organizations.
Right, that's just a, that's a function.
Function of how big the paper was.
Yeah.
This is visually, so, so really, I mean, the, the, the Board of Selectmen is the functional head of the town. The chair signs documents, but the chair is no more or less. I mean, it is a collective of five.
You can have a job.
Well, if it's in line, um, for the, the pleasure. But, um, actually it is. I, I, I enjoy the public when I get to go out and present, you know, certificates of appreciation and, and things like that. Just, it's just because it just, it's, it's giving somebody recognition for valid reasons. Anyway, but back to this. So this visual is perhaps not logically accurate.
But it does highlight where, um, for every board and committee, some town employee is getting tasked with work. There's a, there's a strain, um, on the resource. And I think this visual helps show that certain areas of, of the town, um, organization are dealing with a lot of boards and committees.
Right. And, and so that's, that's another reason, communication is to be streamlined.
Streamlined, extremely clear, who's gotta talk to whom, under what circumstances, who weighs in on a decision and, and who is merely informed after the fact.
Absolutely. So if there's communication, um, typically forwarded to the chair, the chair will then respond. And typically share with Greg, um, and whatever other department head is involved. Does that clearly, is that clear? Clear as mud, clear as mud. That's my, but, um, no, but.
My big concern is I don't want to step on toes. All right, and so as long as, when in doubt, Greg's, I mean, Greg's the point that he can either direct or, uh, deal with it himself. Is that fair, in some sense?
If, if it pertains to staff.
But, well, or questions that staff would have to deal with.
Correct. And if it's anything else, if it's, um, correspondence, you know, regarding anything town or otherwise, then you can just forward it on to me. But, um, and then to that's all. I was about to go farther on something, that's another term right here. Okay, it is now currently, oh, nice, funny, woo-hoo. I think that's covered that for now. Um, we do need to, do you have more on the, the cat administrator?
I'm good for now.
Okay, then we should go into executive committee. Executive, say again? Executive session, but, um, I guess Debbie, that we, I would like a motion to.
Your.
Oh, yeah, okay. Like to go into executive section per, that's potent water. Mass General Law, Chapter thirty-eight, Section twenty-one A two, to discuss strategy with respect contract negotiations with non-union personnel not to return to public meeting. So who'd second?
Second.
Okay. John Round?
Yes.
Kathy Balada?
Yes.
Anne Harrison?
Yes.
Becky says yes, so it was moved by Anne Harrison, seconded by Brian Solacey. Thank you, everybody, for joining us tonight. So Christina and Karen and Rick, thank you very much for attending and good night.